Does anyone want to come on? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. This is the May meeting for the office of the Land and Home Board of Appeals. If you have not signed in, a sheet in the back on the table, please sign in so we have your presence noted in minutes. In case you've never been to one of our sessions, let me tell you how we operate so you can keep up with us. I will call each case by case number and case name. Staff will come to the lectern, give us the request and how the staff has viewed it. After they have presented it, there will probably be questions and/or discussions among board members, back to staff and amongst ourselves. Once we're satisfied we have heard that side, then I will ask if there's anyone here in support, or if the applicant is here, or someone representing the applicant is here and would like to speak. If so, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, give us the information you wish for us to take under advisement. If there are multiple people in support, we would like to know you're here, but once the information has been given to us, if your thoughts have already been presented, please don't give them to us again to take up time. There will possibly be questions and/or discussions should someone come to the lectern, and we will take it all under advisement. Then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition, or if there is any persons here that have questions about what is being requested. If you have opposition or questions, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, and give us the information you would like us to take under advisement. Once we have heard both sides and discussed it, then we will normally render a decision here today. However, it is in the prerogative of the board, should they deem it necessary for parties to talk or information lacking, we can postpone for approximately thirty days until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, the first case we will call is Lous County, KJAR 2015-07 Franklin Bailey.
Mr. Ture.
Yes.
I need to make a case.
Okay, please let the minutes note that Ms. Fowler has a conflict with some description that she is sitting in the back of the audience and will not be participating.
Good afternoon, members of the zoning board of Queens. My first case for today is an variance request. Basically, this is an attempt to construct about nine homes on nine lots as highlighted on the screen there. But then you'll notice that all these lots are corner lots, and that's the reason for the variance. The lots average about six to five hundred square feet in size, and it's the developer's intent to construct homes that are of the same housing product as the existing homes in the subdivision, which are roughly twenty-five hundred square feet all on the roof. I believe, Mr. Strickland, you were only one on the board back in 2006 when this section of Northlake came forward to board, and a variance was granted to the rear yard setback. It was granted conditionally, the condition being that the lot dimensions or the setbacks for the front and side yard had to be complied with. Staff looked at this particular variance and can understand the reasoning with corner lots. They are at a disadvantage with the other lots, particularly with the side yard setbacks. The side yard setbacks for the interior lots, not the corner lots, are six feet, which the houses are required to be six feet off of the property line. In the case of the corner lot, the secondary front yard has to be twenty-three feet instead of the six feet that the other yard, side yards are granted. Staff looked at this, they're trying to go from a twenty-three foot setback to a seventeen foot setback, which is a relief of about six feet. And staff didn't have any relief problems with the variance request. There was another option to be discussed with the developer, but they were trying to get the same type of housing as with the existing lots. So with that, staff has recommended approval conditionally. We wanted to follow the 2006 condition that the number of appeals placed on this section of Northlake, that being that the lots will comply with the front yard setback and the side yard setback. In other words, they couldn't come and ask for administrative waiver or some type of relief for that primary side yard setback. So with that, do you want to have to answer any questions?
Any questions from the board at this time? In reading the package, they are, what we're trying to do according to staff, I guess, is we're going to try to maintain the rear yard as it was, front yard as it was, and the secondary front yard, which is a side yard, you're talking about giving them an extra six feet?
Yes, on that secondary front yard.
So the only real variance is going to be on the secondary front yard quote side yard.
That's correct. And what's the condition being that these houses have to have two-car garages?
Any questions, any discussions?
No questions. You said that all the houses out there are twenty-five hundred square feet under roof?
Right.
Not even?
That's correct.
Was that part of the original restricted covenants?
That wasn't part of the original condition. I don't know whether the covenants required houses to be twenty-five hundred square feet.
Is there anything to bind him to that, Michael?
No, not that we can impose.
You were concerned that they were going to be bigger or smaller or both?
No.
So in the lower to middle of 2000s, is the minimum that they can put in there?
We don't have minimums in the ULC, we don't establish minimums.
And as old as that subdivision is, covenants are probably gone.
Actually, the subdivision was recorded around 2005.
I thought it was older than that.
So maybe the developer can, or the applicant can answer that question, are they bound by that twenty-five?
But they have to have a two-car lot.
That's the condition we're suggesting. And as you can see, there is one lot, and this was a question of me and the applicant on the corner of Summer Hill and Missy Ridge, there is a house there, that there's some question of whether or not they need that twenty-three foot setback. We wrote approval for them to do it, so, but there's been some question raised as to whether they need a setback.
But that is not one of the houses, more of the lots that we're dealing with here, that one's already up.
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions or any other comments?
Thank you.
Does anyone here would like to give us any additional information?
Good afternoon, Franklin Bailey, 1091 Ridge Road, and I am the person seeking to get the variance of this piece of property. I appreciate Carmella for her presentation, she basically encapsulated the whole thing for me. It is, what we're trying to do is to take the corner lots, if you will see the plaque that's showing up there, there are actually twelve lots on one street, and none of them are built on except for one, and that's what Carmella also said, I think that gives possibly some encroachment issues there besides the one. But the reason those lots are still there, even with the relief that this board gave in 2006, the lots are still there because of the primary six-foot setback on one side and twenty-three on the other, only gives you about a thirty-five foot wide house, and that just won't work with the two-car garage implemented and what y'all did. And so while we're looking for some relief to go down where I put a forty-two foot wide house on there, around fifteen fifty to sixteen hundred, heated with a two-car garage, I found a couple of house plans that I can actually make that happen. And that's what we're trying to do at this time.
Any questions, any discussions from everybody on board at this time? Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Yes, sir.
Is anyone else here in support who would like to give us information? Is anyone here in opposition, or does anyone here have a question about what is being questioned?
I'd like to have a question.
Okay, let's back up a minute, Ms. Hobbie.
On this house size, are you bound to do a thirteen minimum square feet?
Thirteen hundred is the minimum square feet. That is heated area, that is going to include front porch, garage, or back porch.
All right, what are you required to do under roof?
There's no requirements under roof, and it's all based on heated area.
And what is the average size out there now?
The houses run from fifteen to seventeen hundred, heated area. So if you take fifteen hundred and you put four hundred and forty square foot of garage on there, you're almost at two thousand square feet there. Then with the front porch and the rear porch, you're anywhere twenty-two and twenty-two hundred under roof.
Not that you're bound, but I'm curious, with house plans, you said you have two house plans that you need on those corner lots, what size heat square feet are they?
Fifteen fifty.
So the houses that are being tentatively proposed are going to be in scale with what's there?
Oh, most definitely. That's why we came, because to do the two-car garage that was imposed in 2005, a thirty-five foot wide lot wasn't going to happen. So we have dug deeper, found some stuff with the forty-two foot width that I can make happen.
And I'm going to back it up, as memory serves me, part of the reason, if not the major reason that we tried to, or we specified the two-car garage was to have enough parkport and enough drive to park cars, so they weren't parking all over the streets and all over the grass and yards and such as that. And that's why we put the two-car garage, alleviate congestion and...
That probably makes the neighborhood easier.
Well, if I can answer any of this too, with the corner yards that would be putting on, the houses, if you look at the house from street, it would not be a garage, we will have actual windows on the front facade, so actually it will look like a nicer house rather than one you drive right into and you will. I think the facade would be really nice on.
So the driveway will be on the side yard where the seventeen feet?
That's correct. And I believe I, did I show that on my rendering that I did for you, Ms. Ford? There it is. Well, I didn't show it, but did I show it? It actually will be a comfort side yard entrance, so like the front and side will be finished halfway across with windows and everything, garage.
Okay, any other questions or discussions from the board at this time?
I've got a question.
Is the section nine of the subdivision, is that still subject to the restricted covenants?
Home Association?
I don't know that I can answer a question. If you guys can come out, yes, yes.
All right, and that would set out with the minimum square footies if we're going to be in question. You would have to follow those rules and regulations, and they're a record, sir.
Well, I'm going to go forward, but they're going to tell me anyway.
Yeah, yeah. I think that answers Nancy's question more.
Okay, we had no one in opposition with any contact in your office, Ms. Carver?
Yes, sir, there was a number of calls, but it was more inquiries. They thought multifamily development was going on, but after he told them it was a single family, they were okay.
Okay. Any other questions, any other discussions before I call a question? Would somebody step out and give me a motion on this request?
I'm going to motion, okay, as requested, by the criteria of D mentioned.
And with the conditions that were staff recommending?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, have recommendation, motion by Ms. Hobbie to grant the request as presented with the stipulations from staff concerning maintaining rear yard and primary front yard setbacks, and a two-car garage citing D and G. Do I have a second? I have a second, Mr., how far I was looking this way. Call, all in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous, good luck with it, make it look good, please.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case we've got is Lous County, VAR 2015-08 Rodney Teneri.
Teneri?
Teneri, okay.
Yes, sir, this last county request is an attempt to divide property using the several regulations that were meant for volume tracks. Those several regulations being family ties. Basically, with the adoption of the ODC, the board commissioners adopted provisions for families to divide properties for their siblings or heirs without going through the rezoning process, but with some stipulations. For example, if you were in an area that's on the EA which requires minimum five-acre lot size, you can subdivide and create up to five one-acre lots, but the remnant has to be at least a minimum lot size for that zoning district. In this case, we have a legal non-conforming lot, so two-acre lot, and the applicant would like to subdivide her property into two one-acre lots. Well, in doing so, using family ties, in doing so, there's two regulations that she will not meet, and one of those regulations is that a lot width, the EA zone requires her lot to be at least two hundred and ten feet, and she also will not meet the remnant requirement of being five acres because the lot is already non-conforming. Staff looked at this, there was actually two options, another option that was available to the applicant, and they could have applied for a rezoning to R1, which would have been risky. The variance is also risky, so they chose to go the variance route. Staff looked at this, it was some debate on whether, you know, we should do this and start a precedent, but staff ultimately recommended approval because there are adjacent lots in this property that supported the family ties and vision, and what they're proposing will not be out of scale with what's already going on or what could happen as a matter of life. So with a split vote, staff recommended approval citing criteria D and standards.
Any questions or comments from the board at this time?
I have a question. How did this lot come to be?
It was a, it was, I hate to use the term grandfathered in, but it was created prior to the zoning rule. It's already in place. And one of staff's concerns was that, you know, this is kind of a backdoor way of getting something done, if you want to look at it that way. And small lots are just not afforded, you know, rights that larger lots are afforded. But ultimately, staff didn't see a problem.
Any other discussions, any other questions? Commissioner Carver?
(laughing).
I'm sorry. I'm only bringing it for you. Is there anyone here to speak in behalf of this request? Old habits are hard to learn.
Good afternoon, I'm Rodney Teneri, on East North Street, and I'm representing the landlords. Whoever answered any questions yet?
Do you have anything that you had to add?
Pretty much, she summed it up, this gentleman summed it up, and we, everything is already in place, all houses are currently own property, set intention in place, wells in place.
Okay. Any questions, any discussions from the board? Thank you very much. Is anyone here in opposition, or does anyone here have questions about what is being requested? Any contact to your office?
None.
Any discussions, ladies and gentlemen? It's all straight forward. Can I get a motion on this request?
Motion, every grant this variance citing D and status.
A motion for Dr. Housel to approve the request as presented using criteria D. Second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Hobbie, all in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous, good luck with it. Okay, we have reached the end of the Carmella show. Now we get to Tracy's show.
I agree.
Okay, the next case we'll call, city case APP 2015-02 Fairway Outdoor Advertising.
Thank you, Chairman and Board. We have a request from Fairway Advertising. It is located at 807 West Hill Avenue. It's a highway commercial, there is currently about a seventy-two hundred square foot building on the lot, it lies currently as a church. The applicant is proposing to replace a sun face. I don't know if y'all went out to visit the sign or not, Bradford Pairs are doing a good job of camouflaging that pole out there. There is an existing pole which is right there that was altered, the face was altered, was removed in order to confront the overpass. The applicant would like to place the face back on and extend the height a little bit. This hole's currently thirty feet, and the applicant would ideally like to raise it to sixty. That's what they're asking for a variance for. They're proposing to decrease the face from, let's see if I can get my number right, from three hundred and seventy-eight square feet to about two hundred and fifty square feet. So they want to make the sun face smaller, but the height taller, if that makes sense. They would by rock be able to go and place the sun at the forty feet, thirty feet plus the ten feet face, so total of forty feet from grade to top, and three hundred and seventy-eight square feet by rock. However, the reason they're in front of you is because they want to make the sun tall. Signs in the highway commercial district are ordinarily capped at twenty-four feet from grade to top of the sign in single tenant facilities, or single tenant facilities. Combine that with the fact that they're in the historic district, the historic district allows eight feet tall signs in, for the historic district. This did go in front of HPC last night, and was approved to go from that forty feet to a cap total of fifty feet. So they are approved to go through the HPC for a total of fifty feet. Now, plenty of things I need to say up, and there's the size schematics, sixty foot from top to grade. We did a series of drive-bys and took some photos, forty feet, forty feet, forty, sorry, forty-five feet, fifty feet, and sixty feet. We took pictures of that forty-five and sixty feet, and included some of them in your packets. We wanted to be able to better see what forty-five and sixty would lack, so to speak, when you were in different areas near the overpass. We got forty-five feet tall on the left, sixty feet from about the same angle. We got forty-five feet, sixty feet, from about the same angle. And boy, look at the overpass, forty-five and sixty. We felt like forty-five feet may not be as visible as ideally should be. Sixty feet was a little bit tall. We wanted to balance visibility with the historic nature of the historic district. So staff did a, staff recommended for approval for fifty feet with a cap of two hundred and fifty square feet for the variance. So we recommend for fifty feet tall from the grade to top of the sign, and no bigger sign faces than two hundred and fifty square feet. Ms., would you like to add anything?
I moved up here so I could play man white, so crazy, wouldn't have to run back and forth, but just wanted to add a couple things on this review. We all know that the DOT overpass project took a long time. DOT acquired additional right-of-way around the overpass, some of the signs were purchased as part of that. This sign was affected, but it was not purchased, it still remains on private property. However, the sign being up high already, fairly close to the overpass, DOT requested permission for the non-conforming sign top to be removed temporarily for fear that the crews working on the overpass construction might accidentally hit the sign. So they wanted at least that part out of the way, and we agreed, but the condition was since it was a non-conforming sign, that the sign simply be put back the way it was, the same height, same size, and that's how we left it. No one knew at that time just how much higher the overpass would be next to the sign, we knew there would certainly be a height difference there, but how to quantify that was very much of an unknown. So the company is now wanting to put the sign back, but because overpass is sort of right there at the top of the old pole, they want it a little bit higher, and also make it a little bit smaller, partly because of the property line now being closer to the pole. The question becomes, all right, staff can go along with a little bit higher because of the bridge, but that's of course not the only part of the road, but the question is how high is high enough, or how high is reasonable? And that's why we ran the different scenarios. We took photographs of forty-five and sixty, Tracy took pictures, I took pictures, James Horton, Historic Preservation Planner, also went out and looked, and we have a series of pictures in your packet, plus the ones that Tracy put on the screen. On the screen, she did, does it as a comparison of the same approximate location, forty-five versus sixty, in your packet, we give you a series of forty-five foot tall pictures versus sixty foot. Our initial impression when we saw forty-five, particularly coming from downtown, coming from the east getting west, forty-five seemed to be right at a good height, good visibility, but not terribly high, a little bit higher than what was there. But then we noticed coming back over the overpass going east toward downtown, that for a good part of the approach coming up the bridge, like where Tracy's pointing, she found man white, you can see the top of the bucket truck, and the top of the bucket is where the height is measured from. This is the city arborist bucket truck that goes out to trim trees, it can actually go up over seventy feet, so we had him with a height measure, and the bucket is directly over the pole, so we wanted to get an accurate measure and an accurate location. So as you see in the picture on the left, the forty-five sort of gets lost on the edge of the bridge. Now granted, that springing that's there is not completely opaque, particularly when you're moving, you can see through it and just add sort of a gray tone to what you're trying to look at, but like you see in some of the other pictures, as you're approaching the bridge from the west, you can't see the sign pretty clearly because your angle of view is different. It's some interesting geometry with the curvatures of the bridge, and of course, from their point of view, and if you're long distance from the sign, you can't read the copy that's on there, so you've got to be within a certain range. So the concern was that too high becomes really oppressive, particularly from distances away from the bridge, particularly from the downtown view shed, and so we thought, well, forty-five is too short, sixty is definitely too tall, so something in between, we thought fifty might work, so we had them reset the bucket at fifty feet. We had already been out there, and it was raining that day, we had imposed on our landscape people a little bit much, so we tried to speed it up, and we opted not to take pictures, but we wanted to do a drive-by around the loop just to see, and fifty seemed to be right where it needed to be, a little above the forty-five, but not too high to be obnoxious. So that's what we're recommending is the cap of fifty.
My eyes aren't real good. Does the top of that fence, here at the top of that bucket?
The forty-five feet is above the fence, it's just your angle of view when you're below the curve coming from the west, just over the bridge. the bridge, you're coming up the hill. So you're not looking level, you're looking up a little bit. And so you're having to look up over the rim of the bridge. A good frame of reference for those of you that have been out there is the top of the wall is pretty much at the top of the pole.
Where it is now.
Where it is now. And the pole is right at 30 feet. We measure the pole itself, I mean, like to the inch kind of thing. The, there's a very tall electric pole to the east of there that's pretty wide, sticks out like a sore thumb. We didn't measure it with a tape measure, but from eyeball and the bucket level, we think that pole is at 55 feet. That kind of gives you an idea of frame of reference for those of you that have been out there. It's a pretty big pole.
I guess my question is, I know this sign face is 250 square feet. What is the distance from the top of the sign to the bottom of the sign?
Sign itself is tend, the panel is tend to be high. And there's a schematic in your packet, and I wanted to point out that is not too scaled because they're, what they're showing is a total height of 60 feet. The sign head is 10 feet. And there's a lot more distance between the bottom of the sign and the ground than what that scale is showing. I don't think you see that.
If you're coming from the west, headed east in that first photo, and there's a sign at 45 feet, well, we're really talking about 50. Will it give clear view of the sign face?
Okay, we might man it here. This right here is at 45 feet, and this is near the crest of the bridge. And keep in mind, the sign pole is just east of the crest. The crest is right over the railroad track. So that's 45 feet. And the guy standing in the bucket is, we're standing at bottom level, and he is almost 6 feet tall. So 50 feet is above. So even at the worst angle of view, which is up here, you're still going to see the top of the sign very clearly. The bottom portion of it might be partially obscured through this netting, but you can still read it. And as we pass through, we can see the entire bucket very, very clearly at 50 feet and the top of it without any. But a short distance to the east and a short distance back to the west, the entire bucket and then some is plenty of above this.
And that would be at 50 feet?
That's at 50 feet. When we drove this at 45, which is what you see in this sign, this was obscured for a pretty good distance in terms of the bucket and kind of guess 10 feet down. And particularly when you get back a little ways, you're not able to see through the fencing because you have too sharp of an angle, it really does hide it. And at that point, the sign really does need to be above the fencing. And it's also probably the optimum distance when you read the sign. A motor system is going to read the sign as they provide at 35 miles an hour, they're going to be a few hundred feet away. So that's the angles we were shooting for. 50 feet gets it above this, even down the hill a little ways, and particularly on down the hill, in the west. 60 just towers and it's higher than the electric pole that's there.
And in all honesty, like Matt and I kind of talked about how we thought this would kind of play out, how 45, 50, and 60 would look. We pumped it up at 45, thought that was going to be great. You can see that there were some visibility issues. Bumped it up, okay, we need to try 60, 50's not going to work. Bumped it up to 60 and it looked almost like a high rise in the middle of downtown. Thought like that was a little bit tall. Bumped it down to 50 and 50 was almost right on that.
And then when the bucket first went up, I was standing beneath it, looking up at 45 feet going, gosh, that's high. We really thought that even might be too high. And then when we got to the east side, turned around and looked and said, no, that looks about right. And sort of took different vantage points and I thought that 45 is it. Until we got to the other side and came back toward downtown and realized that does, it works for every angle of that. And then we tried 60 to go to the other end of the spectrum to see, and it was, in our view, clearly too high from all angles, particularly from that panel. So we thought somewhere between, and we ran 50 just to see. And if 50 didn't work, we would have done a few more just to see. But 50 seemed to be pretty good.
And 50 is what historic?
HPC has approved it. There are certificate approvals granted. Variance, if you will, was a pretty extreme one. This is on the edge of the historic district, by the way, it's not right in the middle. The railroad track is the mountain. And their sign regs don't allow signs over eight feet tall as a freestanding sign. So it's already big mountain formity there, but since there was a change to a structure in the district and it exceeded the design guidelines, it had to be approved.
And this is a billboard sign, not an all premise advertising.
Well, if you recall in city regs, billboards are simply defined as size. Right now, the sign that was there is nonperforming was a billboard because it was 300 square feet or greater. And actually, they're proposing to drop it down to 250, but it actually takes it out of that category and it's just a regular freestanding sign rather than a billboard freestanding sign. But it's still a freestanding sign, subject to height limitations and sizes and things of that nature.
Well, what I'm trying to do is, they can advertise on every entity is down.
They can advertise anything they want, whether, regardless of how it's classified.
Well, but more than likely, this is not an advertisement for that particular use. It's going to be a billboard type advertising.
And off premise advertising.
Off premise type advertising. And what I'm looking at is, at some point in the future, there's other couple of buildings down there that want to say, hey, we want to do the same thing. And at that point...
And then they'll need their own approval from HPC and their own variances if they want to exceed the 24, 35 foot height.
But they're going to come running in and say, he did it all.
They might. The difference is here, you've got a grandfathered in nonperforming sign that was already too tall and certainly too big. And that is actually reducing in size pretty significantly and going up 10 feet.
What can they put up right now?
The sign that was there before, which was at top ex, was at 40 feet.
Yeah, but they can't do that because obviously you can't see it. They wouldn't do it.
Well, they could do it.
They could do it, but they wouldn't want to do it because no one can see it.
Correct, that's why they're here.
So they have to get the variance to go up to 50 minimum.
Correct, that's why they're here.
What is your, what's y'all's thoughts on the aesthetic? I mean, this is a brand new overpass. You want to look at the landscape and you have to look at the sign?
I'm sure even if they were to put it back as it was, our phones would start ringing because it has been gone for a few years, even though the pole has remained. And that was one of the conditions we have with DOT, that the pole remain. So it's still, planted and placed, still part of the sign. It is a concern because one, it's on the board of the historic district and certainly a gateway into downtown. Which is why we wanted to be, you know, at least somewhat conservative on the height, not to go too high or be too intrusive to the view coming into downtown. But we also have to recognize it is grandfathered in as it was.
Why didn't the DOT buy it during the foundation?
Because they did not need the land that the sign sits on.
And that was the only one?
That was the only one in this area. There were some signs on the north side of the road that were on land that was purchased. So all structures that were there were removed. And that did include a few sign poles.
Go ahead.
Just to be clear, at 50 feet, there is some point when you're coming from the west to the east where you can see the whole sign face above the screen? Oh, is it one or two faces?
It's a double sign, it's two faces. But single tier. And losing about one third of its area.
I think it's pretty close to the highway, isn't it? I mean, to the road, the overpass?
Well, this is the distance here.
So it's not as close as you...
It's on private property. And I think one of the reasons they've got to make it smaller is they can't overhang into the DOT right of way. In that right of way, it has been closer to the sign.
The sign has to be three feet from the property line to the edge of it five feet?
And in your packet, there's a site plan that actually shows the new right of way boundary, the easement that they have to put signs on, which I think DOT acquired some of that land, so that made it more interesting for discussion, but it was a pretty great empty area. Here's how it looks on the ground from the west looking east. You can see how a tower is above the Bradford Pairs. This is from east looking west, and that's from west looking east. And in your packet, there's some other pictures further back that show the 45 and 50, this 60 this area. As well as a picture of the original sign. That's the first picture in your packet, from about seven years ago.
Any other questions or discussions at this time?
Can I just make a comment?
Well, go ahead.
You know, billboard signs are kind of unnecessary people. We need them, y'all will notice on this sign prior to the overpass, it's advertising South Port Medical Center. So I'm just thinking, you know, we need signs to lead into downtown Belaosta and what is offered there. I mean, I have a feeling they're going to be reading signs to people that are going to be seeing these coming into our city that need to know where certain things are. Maybe I didn't make that very clear. I mean, maybe I didn't explain that, but I mean, I was just looking at the sign, South Port Medical Center.
Sure, okay. Any other questions, discussions? Is anyone here from the applicant side who would like to give us any additional information?
Well, I'm Bart Hol from Fairway Outdoor, 369 Enterprise Drive. I'm just here to answer any questions. I think what the city did here with their bucket truck is a lot better than what we did with a pole sticking up with a little flag on top trying to see it. And as I told the Historical Society Board last night, the 50 foot, if these pictures, which if the big shows, that's all we're looking for is to be able to see the sign so that the people we sell it to, you know, get what they're paying for.
All right.
Is there a reason not to ask for 60 feet?
Well, I mean, again, what we did is we, we had a pole, and our pole was only 50 feet, and it just had a little handkerchief on it, and we were riding over. And even at the 50 feet or even at the 60 feet, as you're coming up the hill, there's this, Matt, there's a, there's a section there that you lose the sign. But I'm not sure you could get it high enough that you would not put it to sign because of the fencing. And when you're looking through the fencing at a certain angle, it's just like looking at a sheer wall there.
And part of it too depends on which lane you're in. If you're in the right lane closest to the fencing, then that angle is even more sharp and you're having to look over into the sky to get above it for a short stretch. It's a little bit better when you're in the left lane coming out of the town, you have a little better angle when you catch full view of the sign a little faster.
Now, when you're heading east, the height that it's at, you would probably see it very well.
You see it very clearly when you round that curve by the newspaper publishing building, look this way at it.
Has there ever been a study to show the distance from a sign that people usually are reading that sign?
Well, I mean, there have been some studies and, you know, it, it all depends on the speed, the traffic and all that. I can tell you that when you're on the highway and what the DOT has looked at as far as, the only thing I can relate it to is where they allow you to open up a window through the vegetation, they look at a 500 foot window. So anywhere from 500, 400, 300 feet is where, you know, people see the sign and read the sign. When they get closer to that, you know, they're looking past the sign on down the road.
And another variable is the size of the font. If you have words on there, the letters 2 feet tall versus 6 feet tall makes a difference. Lighting?
I'm sorry. And the recommendation that staff has made, if we approve this, would Fairway or the owner of that pole be able to revert back ever to the original 30 foot with the 375 foot?
Once the sign is changed, any grandfathered says it had previously goes away once a new sign put back. So we're recommending approval of an increased height of sign at that location to go no higher than 50 feet. But also subject to the condition that the size be reduced to no more than 250 square feet, which is what we're proposing. The question really is just how high.
Yeah, and two reasons that we propose a smaller size is, again, possibly the right of way there, and also to utilize that pole. When we did the engineering, you can't put as heavy a load higher, you know, the wind. So we reduced the size just to make sure the engineering part works.
They don't want to dig up and rebuild their foundations.
Any other questions or discussions? Is this a digital building?
No.
It's just a static posture of this.
Anyone else? Assuming we have nobody else in the audience, we don't have anybody else in support, and assuming there's nobody else, I'm assuming we don't have any opposition. Was there any opposition to your offer that we should be aware of?
We only received one phone call and that was wondering, that was wondering what the red and white sign had appeared in the middle of the class. I had no questions other than that.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, any other discussions before I call the question?
I made a motion that we approve the variance of how filed the staff recommendation at 50 feet. And the 250 face, face size.
We have motion from this department to grant the request as presented at 50 feet, 250 face maximum.
Those are maxims, right?
Maxims. Per staff recommendation. Do I have a second? I have a second, this is for the, if I have a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous, good luck with it, sir.
I voted against it.
I'm sorry, it was not unanimous.
You were the thinker pose.
I did not see your hand, and I didn't ask for opposition. That's a taken. Is anybody in opposition? Well, you voted not unanimous. Okay, thank you very much, sir. Good luck with it. Okay, that concludes the business part of the agenda pretty much. Under other business, we have approval of minutes. I didn't see anything in them. Did anybody else see anything needs to be modified? Can I get a motion to accept a minute as presented? Some motion, Mr. Alvarado. Second, Mr. Paul, all in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. The only other thing that I penciled in, unless I missed something, did you not put an application in?
I decided to let someone else have the opportunity to have it in.
That's, that's fine. I just want to open the paper up today and start reading. I said, whoa, here's Laverne's name, and I got to look, no, Laverne's name is not there.
But I just wanted to tell everyone that it's been a pleasure working with you.
We appreciate your time and your dedication.
Working with you all, and I want to give someone else a wonderful opportunity. It's been a pleasure to sit.
Appreciate your time and effort. Okay, any other new business, old business, anything we need to bring up?
Can we get, take a picture of ourselves since we're all here before Laverne leaves?
Somebody else has got?
Let me run and get the camera. He just, he's looking up on here, this is fine as here, this would make me fancy. Would maybe she stand in the group?
Well, she's going to be slamming the back door back there if she's going to take this whole table.
No, 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 just stand in the group and try to take it easy. All right. Yet you want to have evidence now, it's actually...
They will pay for that. Look at what Laverne's got there. You can get your nice hat.
Right here, just right here.
I guess you can, I can't take you. I mean, that's smart of you.
We can, we can, here you go. One.
You can take several.
I was going to say look up top.
Are we ready?
One, two, three.
Can you see Laverne?
Uh-uh. She's around the center. One, two, three.
Take my next one.
On Mr. Alvarado, is it top?
Sorry.
A photographer always takes multiple pictures.
One, two, three. Nice.
Okay, thank you. Any other rules we need to discuss? We stand adjourned, thank you ladies and gentlemen. Thank you again for your time and service.